Let's get this meeting started. Can I get a roll call?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Dibble.
Here.
Vice Chairman Schrader.
Here.
Commissioners Arguni.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner York.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Mandel.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza.
Here.
And Commissioner Munoz.
Here.
Quorum established.
All right. At this time, I would like to open up the general public comment session. If you have comments on a specific item, there will be opportunities to speak on those items later in the meeting. So this time, does anyone have any general public comment? All right, there being none, I will close the public comment section and look for approval of absences.
Motion that we approve the absences for Commissioner Mandel.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve absences. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number four, approval of minutes from the May 18th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 18th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the May 18th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to item number five, the consent public hearing agenda. And I guess we have items A, I guess A and B and C. Correct, Andrew?
It would just be item A on tonight's consent.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, Andrew, can we do consent agenda? We have one upstanding from item number three, so maybe if we can address that item separately?
Sure.
Thank you.
Would you like to do that one first?
That's fine, yes.
All righty, sir. For the record, I am Andrew Demus with Development Services, reading in tonight's consent agenda, beginning specifically with item number three, Delmar Townhomes PUD, a final of .476 acres. Staff and the TRC have both reviewed this particular plat and are recommending approval.
Any questions for staff on item number three?
I have a question. This just goes back. Is this the same tract that was proposed differently? We had a bunch, we had several residents.
On Cole Street, yes, sir.
This is, is this the same tractor or is it a different one?
Yes, sir, the same property on Cole Street.
But different, different proposed zoning use? Is that, or change, I mean, change in zoning?
Correct. Inherently, a PUD is a deviation and required a change of zoning at that time. So that did already occur and was approved by council. And now this is the plating half.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and no other questions? Can I get a motion to approve item three as presented by staff?
Make a motion that we approve item three.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, going back to the consent agenda, beginning with item number two, Oso Point, a preliminary of 20.076 acres. And item number four, LA Barnett's re-subdivision, block two, lot 3R, 4R, and 5R, replat of .434 acres. Staff and the TRC have reviewed these two plats as well and recommend approval. And item number five, which is our loan time extension, this is the first request for Rod Plaza South, block one, lot one, a final of 1.679 acres. As this is the first request, staff would recommend approval of the time extension. And these are our new time extensions, so these are one-year increments now.
Do we have any questions for staff on items two, four, or five? All right, there being none, I'll look for a motion on items two, four, and five.
I'll make a motion that we approve items two, four, and five as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to public hearing items, beginning with item number six.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brett Flint with Development Services. Item number six is for Padre Island Number One, Block 15, Lot 19BR. That's a replat of .357 acres. Plating requirements for this lot include the construction of wastewater and an undeveloped street at the present time. The property is located at the intersection of Palmera Avenue and Pescadoras Drive. Pescadoras Drive is undeveloped between Palmera and South Padre Island Drive at the present time. An aerial of the location shows you this is out on the island. For the wastewater line, UDC states that they need to connect to city wastewater if there is a line with adequate capacity within 1,000 feet of the property. This property, there is infrastructure within 1,000 feet, but it's all very shallow. And in order to connect to that would require that we waive other design requirements, such as minimum slopes and depths for wastewater line. The developer proposes to install a private lift station and a private force main that would discharge wastewater to an adjacent manhole just across the street from them. Here's a picture of the property. You can see Pescadoras Drive to the right there that is undeveloped. Another picture from a different angle, from another angle. Again, you can see Pescadoras Drive is undeveloped. Here's a picture of the plat. For the wastewater line, the factors in support of that waiver is that there is not an extendable wastewater main within 1,000 feet of the property and that existing manholes in the area are too shallow to allow an extension of the wastewater collection system, meeting the requirements of the current city standards. Favour, factors against that waiver are that there is infrastructure within 1,000 feet, but it would require relaxing current design standards to be for a connection. And the use of an onsite private lift station will require having a private infrastructure across a city-owned right-of-way and a city-owned easement. This will require a use privileged license approved by city council for that infrastructure to be included. For the street itself, again, note that this street, if Pescadoras Drive was completed, that would provide another connection between Palmera Avenue and South Padre Island Drive. South Padre Island Drive is a text dot right-of-way, so access off of that drive is limited. The applicant's factors in support of the waiver are that the street improvements were not constructed when the subdivision was originally developed. And there is a potential that there is a building that jets, that is in the right-of-way near Park Road 22, but that's just a small encroachment, it appears. Factors against this waiver are the constructing, and this waiver includes the utility infrastructure that'd go with that street, which would be water and wastewater. So continuation of the water line through Pescadoras Drive would provide water to other lots and undeveloped areas. Construction of the street would provide access to the lots to the east and would provide alternate access off of the text dot right-of-way. Building the street also would encourage development on adjacent lands because it would provide that additional access. And currently, the neighborhood exits onto SBID are at Encantada Avenue and Meridian Drive, which are with 1,650 feet apart. Completion of Pescadoras would reduce the spacing between those exits to less than 1,000 feet, which provides additional connectivity and better traffic flow. And this is a corner lot from which sidewalk network can be developed in the area. There are undeveloped lots in the area that could install sidewalks as they develop in the future. And there is an existing sidewalk network on both sides of Palmera to the south of this property. I will note that the developer is planning to build a sidewalk on Palmera Avenue as part of the development. Review of the plat requirements, that the developer shall provide streets, curb and gutter sidewalks. Sidewalks shall connect to existing adjacent sidewalks. The need for the waiver is established in UDC, or the potential for a waiver is established in UDC 3.8, .3D. The waiver may be approved, approved with conditions, or denied after consideration of the following factors. The waiver is not detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, or be injurious to other property in the area or to the city. The conditions that create the need for the waiver shall not generally apply to other property in the vicinity. Application of the provision will render subdivision of land unfeasible, or the granting of the waiver would not substantially conflict with the comprehensive plan and the purposes of the UDC. Staff recommendations, we recommend approval of the request of the waiver for the wastewater line subject to a sanitary sewer connection agreement, so that in the future, if sufficient infrastructure is put in place, the owner would be required to connect to that. And we recommend disapproval of the request for the street and public improvements on Pescadoras Drive. Planning Commission can choose to follow or decline staff's recommendation, and they may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the waiver request. Any questions?
Commissioner York?
Thank you. First question's on the wastewater, and I guess that's the biggest question. But I see the plan's private lift station and, you know, this area, all of the rest of that area is undeveloped and potentially could develop. So if this gets granted, then everybody else can try and do the same thing. We're going to have 50 different private force mains dumping into a manhole over there. Did staff look at, what is the master plan here? And is it not, why is it not feasible to use trust funds to build, you know, the master planned infrastructure, which would then open up this whole area for development?
That may be an option, but it would be a considerable amount of money. The nearest manhole of any reasonable depth connect to is over 2,000 feet away. There is already a private lift station in place in this same area that's doing pretty much the same thing that this one is doing.
What does that lift station serve?
It serves the property just to the south of Pescadoras.
Okay. What was done, so somewhat recently, they did the grocery store out there, and they did major trust-funded improvements. Is that infrastructure, the 2,000-foot away that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Where would that line go?
Well, that line, actually, if that line were extended, it would, it would be able to service this property. And that's why we would suggest that a sanitary sewer connection agreement be required as part of the waiver. So that in the future, when that infrastructure is extended, then they would have to connect to that.
And that line would come up, Park Road 22?
I believe it comes along Palmera, actually.
Okay. But staff is okay? I mean, was this just not, it's just because of the balance on the trust funds? Or that, I'm asking, what's the reason that staff didn't say, hey, you need to build the master plan and go use the trust fund?
Well, that's part of it, is the trust funds are pretty stretched and say it's a considerable distance at the present time.
Okay. And then the other question's on the staff recommending disapproval of the request for street and public improvements, which is along whatever the side street is.
Pescadoras.
You mentioned that would include wastewater, so if they don't get this, I'm guessing they're just building dry lines under there, or how does?
We would look at that, yes, as just a dry line for future connection.
Okay. And would they be building the street just along their frontage? Is that correct? You mentioned something about Park Road 22, but it looked like their property only goes.
Yes.
Halfway. So they would just be responsible for their half of Pescadoras to the back of their property?
They would be responsible for Pescadoras to the back of their property, and the property behind them would then have to finish that street out to connect to South Padre Island Drive.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No, this would be the full street because the property across the street is developed at the present time.
Does, sorry, that extra question, does the city participate in the other half? Or what are they responsible for building? Or paying for, I guess?
Well, per UDC, they are responsible for the whole section.
So 28-foot?
Yes.
Street, okay.
Commissioner Schrader?
I think my questions are answered. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here, and would they like to speak on this project? Who would please come up and give your name and address for the record, please? Just if you could, state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Wade Berry, and this is for the Padre Island Number One, Block 15, Lot 19BR.
Just your, your street address, enough for the project, just where you reside.
Oh, 15914 Cozumel on the island.
Very good.
78418. So we bought this property a couple of years ago on the intent to put up a warehouse slash storefront for our pool and spa company on the island. We've been in business for 12 years now, and we're just leasing out a place, actually not too far from this property right here, just to the south of it. And obviously, when we bought the two lots with the intention to build on both of them, so this is where the replat came through, and then for some, that paper street or undeveloped street came up that we would have to develop that street. I guess the question I have is the properties to the south of that street, why they haven't had to build anything? I mean, those properties, there's the motel there, and then there's another building just to the very south of our lot that, I don't know. It's just kind of confusing that we're going to have to develop this street, at least to the B lot. And, I mean, the street's never been developed. I don't know if there's any intention to. And I understand that that's why we're here, to see what we need to do about that, or what we can do about that. But I guess, I guess the biggest question I have is how come the properties to the south of us never had to waive any type of street, or if, why they didn't have to develop anything? Or maybe they applied for a waiver and got approved, and so we're just looking for the approval so we can build our, build our building. I just don't see the, I understand the wastewater. I guess that's the biggest situation from what I've heard you guys discussing. I'm new to this, by the way, very new to this. So the street, I guess it doesn't make sense to me to build the street to the end of the B lot, and then it's just going to be a dirt road to Padre Island Drive for, I mean, X amount of years, I guess. I mean, who knows who's going to buy that A lot? And so I know that, that's something I would question or have a question about, too. Is, you know, we're going to build that street, but then why are we going to pay to develop a street if it's not going to continue all the way to Padre Island Drive? I don't know. I guess that land is still for sale, so I don't see any future or near-future development on that. So I guess those are the questions I would have that, again, that's, yeah, that's all I have, I guess.
Questions for the applicant? Yeah, you know, I think in terms of connectivity with the other lot and stuff, you know, that's something, you know, really would need to take up with city staff on that, you know. Again, if property's already been developed, you know, they can't really go back and ask for that. So definitely a challenging circumstance for you here. Okay. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Murray Bass, Bass and Welch Engineering, 3054 South Alameda, with the engineers for Mr. Berry on this project. We just feel like we're being not treated real fair here, and it may be the regulations and the rules the way they are. But the original plat where the road was dedicated filed in 1950, and that road been sitting there unimproved since then. There's been development on the South Padre Island Drive, the end of the road. There's been development on the other side of La Palmera, significant residential development, yet nobody was made to put that street in. And here we are, unfortunately. He's got a building he'd like to build that won't fit on one of these lots. And if I'm not mistaken, if he could, we wouldn't be here tonight asking for this because the replat wouldn't have been required. And he could have used the land, and it may have been somewhere else, but this, it wouldn't be before this group. But we would certainly appreciate your consideration and for a favorable response to this waiver request. Because it's just, it's too much for him to try to build a business and add to the tax base. And that, build that street all the way through there is just excessive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Murray, I've got a question for you. Did you all discuss with staff in your negotiations, the opportunity for trust fund?
I'm sorry, Sheldon.
Did you all discuss with staff during your discussions, a opportunity for access to trust funds? Trust, trust fund reimbursement?
No, I didn't realize there was any trust fund for street improvements. And I don't.
But for the component, that's the buried line, I guess, that would be the dry line.
I'm sorry, Sheldon, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I guess that would just, just apply to the subsurface portion of the improvement.
Are you talking about the wastewater extension?
Well, I think this is also speaking of.
I think he's asking about the potential to use trust funds for the utilities, the water and sewer in Pescadoras.
Yeah.
I guess, but the, any of the offsite is for a single development like this is relatively small.
The way, the way I read this so far, you've got, you've got utilities under both of these asks. You've got.
There's water on the, on the far side of Palmera existing. So it'd only be water along Pescador.
Okay, I'll, I'll pose this back to staff, because I've got a couple of questions.
And then the wastewater, there's none that you could extend because they're all at the extent, everything close by is at the extent of its depth there. In fact, they're all below what I think city standards are. That one we're going to tie into with our lift station across the street, I think is only three and a half feet deep. I think the city standards is prefer five feet of minimal manhole depth. So it's just nothing anywhere close that you could extend a gravity line to.
Right, okay. I, I'm going to ask staff this question, because I'm a little confused on what, what the total scope is that your clients encumbered with here. So there, I understand the wastewater connection lift station, because I'm dealing with that issue myself. I understand what the scope of that is, but in this street extension piece, there is, there are dry line, I think that's the term being used here, lines that go under that street that if, if they're required to put in their section of street, they'll also be doing underground utilities lines for future use, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so is there, if we impose this upon the applicant, is, do they have ability to get that portion reimbursed?
Technically, per the UDC as currently written, no. They are responsible for the utilities that are adjacent to their property. The trust funds are available for extending those utilities offsite to connect to some distance away, if necessary.
Okay, so, so the way the trust fund works is you can get reimbursed for. for traversing the distance from an existing line to serve your property, but you can't get reimbursed for putting in lines that will not benefit your property in any way, but you have to put them in just because they're adjacent?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, that is pretty hard to swallow if I were there.
I didn't write the U D C, I just read it.
I get it, I just think it's, it's, uh, that, that's, that's hard to wrap your, your arms around. If you're trying to, I guess you've got to decide what size your building is right up front or something on that.
Yeah, I think probably what we need to do is see if there's any other public hearing on this matter before we have additional questions for staff. Okay. With there being no additional public comments, we'll close the public hearing session. And sorry, you just sat down, but I got a question for you if you don't mind. The applicant brought up the question regarding the street and that other properties around him were able to be developed without having to put in their section of the streets. Is the reason this is getting tripped up is solely because of the replat? And, and maybe those adjacent properties didn't need replating, so it wasn't triggering the street requirement? Or could you maybe speak on that?
Well, I don't know the history of the other properties well enough to speak on that in any detail, but I would suspect that either those streets were, those properties were developed prior to the current version of the U D C. Or, as you said, maybe they were platted and there was no need to replat. The U D C language does basically, if you replat, it opens up that door for the requirements of plat required infrastructure.
Thank you. Commissioner York?
To add on to his question, the adjacent properties, and I think you're correct, those properties have been developed for quite some time and this was all platted way before the U D C, back when they allowed paper streets to be platted and nothing to be built. So it, I agree, it's unfortunate, but I understand staff's desire to, you know, two wrongs don't make a right, so just because we didn't get the money last time doesn't mean we shouldn't get it this time, but it is a unique situation. First question is to build on what he was saying. They may not have to replat because they're already all, I think, developed, the adjacent properties. Well, not all, but on the south side of the street. But if they have a building permit or remodel permit, would that also trigger the requirement for public infrastructure?
I think it does, yes.
So...
Well, if, if there were a public safety issue, you know, related to fire access, it would depend.
Okay, so potentially. Kind of where I'm going, that's trying to see, it doesn't, I understand the staff wants to, you know, get something from this plat to fund some of these improvements, but it doesn't seem fair to make them pay for everything. Is there a way, any way, other than what you just mentioned, if somehow they, neighbor applies for a building permit and there's a fire safety, you know, concern? Is there any other way to get, you know, funds either from the neighbors or from the city through participation to help offset the cost of these improvements that are being required?
Typically, our participation agreements, which are bond funds, as you know, are larger type of projects, not a local.
But is that something that, is it possible? I'm just asking, is there a mechanism that can be used?
Well, what we have seen are fee in lieu.
Well, that was my next question. I know you love that one for me.
Yeah, what we have seen in the past are fee in lieu, being deposited for these types of situations. But in my experience, I have rarely seen those fees utilized.
So that was my next question. So is, is that an option in this case? I know I ask that all the time for sidewalk waivers, but in this case, we've got street, sidewalk, water and sewer. How does that work and is it just one or the other?
Yeah, we have utilized it for bridge approaches and for streets in the, in the past.
Okay. If that was done, does, would that cover everything? Or is there like certain things that can't be done fee in lieu of? I mean, would that...
I think we would want to cover the full component of the street, the full public infrastructure component.
So water, sewer, sidewalk and street?
That's correct.
Is it possible or do we have the ability, if, if that was the direction that we went or recommended, to just require them to pay for their half of the street?
That could be a recommendation, yes.
What else did I have on here? And just a couple of questions to, so we know how we can and can't vote here in a little bit. But the, you mentioned something about a wastewater connection agreement. Is that something that we need to mention when we make a recommendation? Or is that already something they're being required to...
No, that, that would be part of, that would be a condition as part of the approval.
Is it already in your recommendation or do we need to act, do we need to state it?
It's in our recommendation.
It's in the recommendation.
Okay, so we're good there. Other thing is the, the one staff's recommending disapproval for request of street and public improvements, that was kind of like several different waivers, sidewalk waiver, street waiver. Do we have, if, if the board wants to, do we have the ability to recommend yea or nay on, on those items separately or does that have to come as a whole, a package deal?
I think you could do that conditionally.
And I'm, I'm just curious, so we know what our options are?
Yeah, I think you could.
It could be separately.
That would be a condition that the, that the commission could impose.
Okay, and then the, the last thing I have is, you may not know the answer to this, but the, you were talking about the ability to use trust funds, which is only for the offsite, but it can also be used for overdepth. Do we know or do you know this, the sewer line that would have to be built on Pescadoras Drive? Is, is that a line that would need to be deeper than usual to serve other properties? You know, those B lots that are there? What I'm getting at is, is there a potential that that could be qualified for trust fund reimbursement?
I'd, I'd have to, to look at that, but I think that basically you would be looking at just a standard line that would match up with the intended master plan line when it came down the road at some point in time. I don't know that that would be considered as overdepth.
So it's not, it's not a larger line or anything, it's just a regular one?
No, it would just be a standard line size to serve that area right there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
Okay, the, the property that this backs up to, that, that fronts on Park Road twenty-two, it, in other words, are there any landlocked property? It looks like that they're just each front, you have a frontage on Park Road twenty-two and you have a frontage on Palmera? Is that right? In, in other words, there are no, there are no properties currently, as they're currently platted, that front only on this, the, the incomplete Pescadoras street?
That is correct. The other properties do front on Park Road twenty-two.
Okay. And do they have access to Park Road twenty-two? Or would their, would their access be predicated on Pescadoras Drive?
Well, Park Road twenty-two is a text dot right of way, so their access would be predicated on getting text dot to approve an access.
Right, okay.
They typically require joint access between properties on their, on their rightaways to limit the number of driveways going out onto text dot roads.
Okay, so if, if something like this were, some portion of this is waived or it's waived, then does a, well, again, if, well, let's say somebody develops the property on Park Road twenty-two without replating and this were waived for this applicant, then nobody has to build Pescadoras, right?
That would be correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions on item number six? And if not, thank you, I'll look for a motion on this item.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the request for the waiver and wastewater line subject to sanitary sewer connection agreement and approve the request for the street and public improvements waiver.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the wastewater line subject to the sanitary sewer connection agreement and then approving the waiver, which is contrary to staff for the request for street and public improvements.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number seven, a master plan amendment.
Good evening. Nick Winkleman, Utilities Department Engineering Manager, now Corpus Christi Water. This is an amendment for the wastewater master plan within the Allison Basin. It's a Royal Oaks subdivision. The loc, the location is between Leopard and McNorton and we've got Ram Morgan and Clarkwood on either side of the development. You can see in the presentation, the hashed area is a Royal Oaks subdivision. The master plan amendment was requested by the developer, N P M Homes, and the engineer, Bass and Welsh, to allow new residential development to connect into the public wastewater system. The estimated flow from the development is approximately two hundred and eighty thousand gallons per day. The current proposed master plan line would run through a known area of environmentally contaminated groundwater. It's been documented and there's a covenant agreement posted for, for the area. Chlorobenzene and carbon tetra chloride are documented and present. The proposed amendment, you can, you can see the green is the original master plan line and that's the area that goes through the contaminated area. The original master plan line would, would discharge directly into what's called the Clarkwood North Lift Station. The amendment would reroute this line away from the contaminated groundwater and would allow for the installation of approximately thirty-six hundred linear feet of twelve-inch sanitary sewer line. A manhole would also have to be installed to connect to the existing gravity line on Clarkwood. The flow would then go to the Clarkwood North Lift Station. The staff, staff has reviewed the request, we recommend approval. It's a reasonable amendment, it facilitates development, allows for the placement of the sanitary sewer line to avoid the contaminated groundwater, which is beneficial for installation, but also for maintenance in the future for city crews. The Clarkwood North Lift Station was reviewed and does have available, available capacity for, for the new line, the new connection.
Very good.
Any questions?
Commissioner Schrader?
Does this, I was presuming this route, since the, the current path is in a contaminated area, I'm presuming the new proposed route then makes, opens up connection possibilities for other surrounding areas, which would be much more difficult with anything through a contaminated area, correct?
Well, the contaminated area is owned and, I mean, that's, I, I don't know the acreage. Oh, actually, I think the acreage is point nine nine acres, maybe something like that. So that does take up a big chunk of the developable land. There is existing wastewater collection system in the area to service the, the existing homes and units.
Okay, so this is just necessary for the, the proposed development? It's not, in other words, other tracks that are to the south are either already have service or would, would not need connection to this?
The only thing I can comment on is potentially there are other areas that could be developed, but I can't comment on the size and the potential there.
In the current route that is the contaminated path, that is through private property and is not, does not have any plan for remediation or anything?
The, the current, the current documentation that's been provided is that the property contains the groundwater. Development can be proposed, if the property's sold, can be proposed if approved. Only certain types of development in the covenant are allowed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, there being none, I'll open the public comment period for item number seven. There being no public comment, I will close the public comment for item number seven and look for a recommendation.
I'm making a motion, we recommend approval on item number seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to zoning, item number eight.
All righty, commissioners, a few zoning cases to go, beginning with item number eight. Case zero, zero four two two dash oh one, request Robert Dominguez. This is a case that had been previously presented to the planning commission with the recommendation to come back with a special permit, so we have done just that. Just to give you a quick refresher, the property is located just off of Violet Road, south of the intersection with Leopard Street. It is a request to the general commercial district, as that would be the minimum zoning needed for a mini storage business. Of the nine notices sent out, we received zero in favor and three in opposition, which is roughly thirteen percent. The common comments that were received among those three, two of course came from the same individual, was decreasing the quality of neighboring properties and it would not be in character with the neighborhood. Now, based on further discussion and working with the applicant, staff will be recommending denial of the general commercial district in lieu thereof, approval of the RS six district with a special permit with conditions. And as you'll see, the conditions that were included in the staff report, I'll go through briefly, is of course the only use outside of the base zoning, meaning what else aside from the base zoning will allow, that is the mini storage facility itself. The buffer yard will require a fifteen-foot buffer yard, which is standard for a general commercial district adjacent to single family, which is this exact same scenario if you were to approve general commercial zoning, so we took that same buffer yard. Will be required to have a seven-foot tall solid wooden screening fence, the lighting standards, which again are standard in the U D C when you're adjacent to residential style zoning, and of course, the building height limited to twelve feet in height. Moving on, we do have a limitation on the impervious surface, as you know, which is common with most mini storage developments, it's an awful lot of concrete. So in order to address some of the concerns of drainage, there is a maximum impervious surface on the site of sixty percent. Aside from that, we have standard limitations on hours of operation, so this will not be a twenty-four hour a day business. They would not be allowed to have a pole-mounted sign on Violet. There are a few mini storages in relative residential areas on Holly and Yorktown in which they, instead they did a monument style, so it's not so obtrusive and, and large. It is a sign that blends in with the environment. Of course, we have noise requirements, which are standard across the U D C. And then the last two are kind of our coveralls. The approval of a special permit doesn't inherently grant you get out of jail free card. You still have to meet all building codes, fire codes and any of our trade codes. And then lastly, the twelve-month time limit if a complete building permit submission is not been submitted to the city or if the U shuts down for more than six consecutive months. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Salazar-Gurza?
Okay, I took a good look at this and I'm around from the area and so... Okay, I took a good look at this and I'm around from the area and so, not that I'm ever against any of the storage units, I think storage units are good. I think they're a necessity for so much stuff that we have accumulated after so much time and so, storage units are something I'm always approving of to have. However, being that I live in that area and I've been down Violet, that is more like a low to medium density area. And if this zoning passes, it will be a high density, correct?
If the zoning without a special permit is granted, so if the general commercial zoning were to be recommended for approval, that would allow medium density or multifamily housing, I should say. If you approve this special permit, that would only allow the mini storage use. It would not allow any other use other than a single-family home.
Well, all of the areas around there are residential. On Leonard Street, Violet, in front, to the right, to the left, I believe there's only a couple of the CN1s that are probably, maybe a little bit closer more to Violet. So, and I did notice the one that's behind the Navy-Army Federal Credit Union on Calicoe and Leopard. So as I drove down Leopard Street, I thought, well, let me see if there's any other kind of storage units around the area. And the only ones that I really saw were the ones that were on Leopard. I didn't see any that were surrounded by residentials. I am concerned about that. I see it as something that doesn't fit right in into the neighborhood. So, in my opinion, I just don't think this is something that I could approve on. I just saw it, I gave it the benefit of the doubt, but I just don't see this storage unit in the area where it's surrounded by a lot of residential. And just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. Andrew, a quick question for you. Refresh my memory on the street infrastructure that's outside. This particular area, Violet, is it a two-lane road? Is it a four-lane road? And how does the existing road infrastructure compare to?
Violet is most definitely a four-lane arterial. So it's one of those, I like to call, historical artifacts, meaning Leopard Street was originally Highway Nine, that was the road to San Antonio before 37 existed. So you have wider-than-usual streets like Violet, Leopard itself, a little bit of Calicoe Road, that are more wide in nature to accommodate traffic going back 50 years. So Violet happens to be one of those streets that is designed to an arterial standard. So it is higher than the usual type of street you would see in a low commercial or residential environment.
Yeah, and that's kind of, you know, I appreciate Salazar Garza's comments, and I think that's where I struggle on this, is because normally on an RS6, you wouldn't have road infrastructure out there. And so it kind of makes it, in my opinion, a little bit different animal, because you do have a roadway that could handle, you know, potential traffic in my concern. It's not a particularly busy stretch of road and so, you know, there's road infrastructure in there. I know this is a transitional use area, you've got churches across the street, you've got some higher-density residential development across the street, but then you've got some lower-density, you know, as well. So definitely an interesting piece of property. Commissioner Jorgini.
Andrew, I have a question. Are those properties surrounding the subject property all residential? Like?
As far as, some of them are residentially zoned, but not are all inherent residential uses, meaning there are a few kind of defunct manufactured home or mobile home parks that exist, even though they're in residential zoning, they're existing non-conforming. There are a few, we'll go back a slide to the aerial. So you have, highlight, you have a manufactured home park here and you have one to the south that takes up a large area. And you do have some vacant tracks that, who knows what the future will hold as far as potential future rezonings that could come up.
What's the current zoning on those?
They are zoned RM1 and RS6, single family. So theoretically, the vacant lot could have an apartment complex, up to 22 dwelling units per acre today, outside of course, plating and building permits and our other processes.
So we have that property to the right that is RM1?
Correct, to the north.
To the north?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schreter.
Can you go back to your slide with the requirement, the special requirements that And these, on the lighting, that's all, that also requires cutoff, correct, to the property? Okay, yeah, I see that in there, yeah.
Shielding, full cutoff fixtures, cone of light must be maintained onsite, which for the most part is standard language in the UDC.
Right.
But I find it's helpful, like many things, whenever we design special permits, I'm designing for a code enforcement officer, I'm designing for a plan reviewer. So in the future, if somebody has to visit the site, instead of having to reference the UDC, they print in ordinance, they visit the site and check off whether or not it meets standards.
No, I missed that the first time when I looked at this. The other question I had related to this is, did, I did not see anything in here on hours of operation. Is that, was that one of the conditions discussed?
Yes, number seven, which will limit the hours from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. And then finally, on the impervious surface, the permitting side is going to cover the fall, the outfall on any of this, correct? In other words, I mean, I appreciate that the 60% coverage, but it's such a narrow property that, you know, what you typically run into with these storage units are if they build them up to build the units, the, because it's narrow, the sides will typically run off to the property line. And because you have either rooftop or paving for so much of this, and it's a pretty narrow lot, it's going to be pretty hard to keep that off of the neighboring properties, but so they'll have to prove that up in the permitting process, then I take it.
Correct, with a drainage plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jorgini.
Could you go back to that zoning slide one more time, please? Is there any?
The aerial or the?
Either one is good. Is there any businesses around that area? I mean, or is this pretty much?
Yes, we do have zoning of neighborhood commercial to the north. As you approach the intersection to Leopard, which is roughly about right here, you have the large HEB complex. Violet then turns into a McDonald's, a couple of car washes, so.
Far out down north, like within immediate area, because I just feel this is consumed with a lot of residential homeowners and obviously, I'm just curious, the motivation of the actual applicant for putting a storage facility right?
Right, those are the very points we brought up the first time around, that are concerns about going to general commercial and why we recommend a denial, and planning commission as a whole gave us direction to come back with a special permit.
Okay.
Andrew, directly across the street and to the left of the diagram, there is a sizable church there too, correct?
Yes, sir.
And how big is the subject property again? I'm sorry?
Thank you. 3.37 acres. Thank you, Nina.
3.7, okay. Thank you.
Andrew, I know when this originally came to planning commission, there was kind of a design of possibly two residential lots, you know, on each front corner of the property with the entrance into the storage unit kind of running between those properties. Is that contemplated as part of this now, or is this just mini storage for the whole thing?
That is still very much the case. The way the meets and bounds have been drawn is to exclude those two pads, essentially what would become two future residential homes. So the meets and bounds, that's part of this zoning request. As much as our map is more of a perfect square, it would need to zoom in a little bit.
There's really two corners in that red outline that would be excluded, correct?
There's a faint red line. Sometimes it's hard to illustrate on a map without almost butchering the map completely, but there is a faint red line that cuts out these two pads for future single-family homes. And one of those would be the owner wishes to live in or have a manager. He also explained that he's going to construct his, essentially his home to retire in on the backside of the property and live onsite. This property section would not be part of the rezoning, so it will not have continual access between Leonard to Violet, but instead you'll have this remainder at the back maintaining the single-family zoning.
Okay, great. Commissioner Jorgini?
Yes, sir. Obviously, we don't know the future, but moving to that, those two pad side, how big are the pad sides?
Well, they would have to be at a minimum of 6,000 square feet and 50 feet in width in order to meet the minimum standards of RS6 zoning to construct two homes. And they are well above that.
The applicant has indicated?
One single-family home on each of these pads, one here and one here, and have the gated entrance down the center. I'm sorry?
I said no commercial later on.
Well, anyone can apply for a change of zoning, but the, if you were to apply for another change of zoning, it would undo the special permit if that's the route that's ultimately approved by city council.
But they're not replating these two sections as part of the whole thing?
The property is, would have to be replated regardless, so it's a, that's a whole separate issue.
These two pad sides, basically using the same RS zoning on?
Is keeping the original zoning and it's not touched by this case. So regardless of how council votes, those two pads would remain RS6.
Okay. Are this, sorry, real quick on that. Those two, because I'm assuming the intent is to plaid them out and then they could potentially be sold, so would the same buffer yard requirements apply to those two pieces? Is that written in here already?
What it states is that anywhere where you buffer upon a residentially zoned property, you would have to construct that, so that.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because the exhibits show this whole thing is the zoning case, but then those two pads, are those not part of the special permit?
Technically, those are not part of this rezoning. It is, it's a, whenever you start to manipulate the lines, it becomes a little confusing when it's displayed. So we find that it's easier to create more round, you know, shapes or perfect shapes rather than get into small turns.
Commissioner Salazar Garza.
So, the area that he plans on building the storage unit doesn't complete the whole 3.37 acres, or the lines that he's, that you have here for the subject property is 3.37 acres?
The hatched lines is the 3.37 acres.
Okay, so the full lot?
So it's this kind of shaded area.
That's 3.37?
That's 3.37, not counting the two pad sides.
Oh, not counting the two sides?
Not counting the two pads nor the area in the rear. That is not part of the 3.37 acres.
So the back area will still be zoned as?
Single family.
So he'll be surrounded by single family?
Yeah, essentially the, the. All right, any other questions for staff?
I have a comment, it's more than anything else. Looking at other storage facilities in town, just playing devil's advocate here, there's a Buttercrust self-storage on Ayers that is surrounded 360 degrees by residential. There's Rodfield Road, there's three storages from SPID to past Saratoga, very heavily populated with residential. So I just don't see how this is any different than those. Just a comment.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Is the applicant here tonight, would they like to speak? If you would please just state your name and address for the record.
Joe Garcia, I'm at 4220 SPID, Suite 212, that's where I office. It's true that we're leaving two properties outside the subject property for residential use. And the rear is outside the property, that's his inclination to put a house for him. So we're in the center. We have basically the 50-foot frontage on Violet and then we run back 110 feet. So this property is all in mini storage. We concur with the staff, we will follow the guidelines and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, there's no questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll open up item number eight for a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on item number eight? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and ask for a recommendation for a motion.
I make a motion, we recommend approval as presented by staff.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, oppose.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number nine.
Okay, so our final zoning case of the evening is case 0422-04, Daniel Homes LLC. This request is from the RMATIO, which is the multifamily, what used to be called Apartment Tourist District on North Pride Island, to the RMATIO PUD. Save that five times fast, it's a long acronym. That's a fancy way of saying multifamily zoning with the island overlay and a plan unit development. So the surrounding properties are essentially zoned the same, RMATIO, as they are within that island overlay, part of the North Pride Island Mustang Island Area Development Plan, surrounded by either vacant lots or similar apartment-style plan unit developments. The only two deviations, I should say, really the only one deviation asked for on this plan unit development is the deviation from the lot width. So the UDC, I'm sure as you read in the staff report, requires that when you cross three units and more within the RMAT district, it requires the minimum lot width to be 85 feet. In this case, the lot is only 50 feet wide. So the only deviation that the applicant is requesting is to reduce that width from 85-foot requirement to a 50-foot requirement to match the width of the property that he currently owns. Now, after reviewing pretty much everything that has been submitted with the PUD application itself, of course, every PUD has to go through the technical review committee, so we had input from solid waste, from traffic engineering, from utilities, or I should say CCW now. We also, of course, review against the review criteria of the UDC itself, which describes that PUDs should contain a variety of housing types or some type of unique design and should not impact off-site uses or some type of recreational facilities. In this case, we are commenting that this is a condo-style development, which means it'll be reviewed commercially, just like any other apartment complex throughout the city. However, the proposed master site plan cannot accommodate the required landscaping. It doesn't meet that minimum 30%. Of the five units that it's proposing, it cannot meet solid waste requirements, meaning if you're under eight units, you have to receive city service. And on 50 feet of width, not only can you not accommodate the 10 cans that you will have, five for recycle, five for your regular solid waste, but also it cannot accommodate any area for your four times a year collection of brush and bulky items. We do take that consideration even at plat design, which I'm sure Commissioner York can attest to, that many a discussion with solid waste of how even cul-de-sacs are designed to accommodate for collection of solid waste. So those are. So those are some serious issues and concerns we have. Additionally, it would have to meet the island overlay standards. There was no mention of the architectural design that would be used, which is mandated by the UDC. And then lastly, it inherently doesn't meet the actual PUD criteria. PUDs, while yes, in the past, we have used essentially as a giant variance, they're really not designed to only vary one condition. It's the townhome developments that you'll typically see that are using the PUD tool, what I like to call, are usually accomplishing your driveway design density, their fee simple lots to be sold, they're going to have some type of pool, clubhouse, community amenity. In this case, it's essentially five units crammed into a 50-foot wide lot, which is really not the purpose of what PUD was designed to accomplish. So bearing all of that in mind, we are recommending denial as staff. And if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to address them.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Schrader?
Typically, when you get these applications for a PUD, you do get a proposed master plan or layout of a property use plan, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And that is essentially your master site plan here. Must have skipped over that one. The button is sticking just a hair. But as you'll see there, yes, there are some boat slips proposed, but you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, a parking lot, and your small driveway along with a small amount of shown landscape area. So it's more than half is roof coverage along with the necessary parking space count.
Right. So based on that and the other requirement, the percentages of coverage are greater than what are allowed on...
Even if they were to use some type of permeable material, just on this design as shown, it wouldn't meet just the bare UDC standard of 30% of a landscape yard. The island overlay has additional landscaping standards where you have to put, you know, almost semi-mature palm trees in. It's not going to fit in this design because once you enlarge that landscape area, you're going to lose parking spaces. There's nowhere else to go.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no questions, additional questions for staff, I'll see if the applicant's here and wants to speak on this item. Thank you.
Joe Garcia, 4220 SPID, Suite 212. This project is an apartment complex. It's 30 feet wide, the units. There's 10 feet on each side. It's geared to place the complex toward the rear and the parking up front. We feel like we have a good plan for it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that
Commissioner Miller?
I guess the biggest concern is even if we were to approve this PUD, this plan would not make it through permitting because of the impervious coverage requirements, your requirements for landscaping and everything else. I mean, have you discussed with your client how they plan to address that?
Yes, we've... We show the landscaping. We show the plans, the parking. We have a requirement for fire hydrant to come up into the property, which we would do, and still have, you know, enough property to do the landscape. So we do have that property available.
If there's no other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. I thought the plan was, the staff recommendation was for approval of a special permit. Is it a denial? That you're...
Yes, sir. Denial.
It's denial. So I have a different... I don't know what you all got. I guess what you all got was the staff's recommendation, but I got a recommendation for approval with conditions. So I don't know what the staff has brought up to you. Would you look at your recommendations?
Yeah, I mean, we can scroll. What is, what was presented to us was a denial of the PUD in the overlay. So this commission hadn't seen anything in terms of, this is the first time we've seen it, so if there was an initial recommendation to you with something with special conditions on this, we haven't seen that. And I'm sure maybe staff might be able to comment on, you know, what happened from when you received that to the denial, but we're not privy to that information.
Well, I have this as was brought up, and it was an approval with conditions. So I'm kind of mixed up by them telling me that it's denial. So I have...
He's correct. Okay, maybe I missed that.
Was that for this item or... Because I know you were involved with the other one. We had approval with conditions. Was it wrong?
Okay, I see in our staff report, it's a recommendation of denial in the PowerPoint. There was a mistake. It said approval in the PowerPoint.
Was that the slide from the previous case we just heard?
That was...
No, that was in your packet or what was in Legistar. It had approval with conditions in the PowerPoint, but the actual staff report said denial, which is our recommendation. It was an error in the PowerPoint. But in the actual staff report, it is denial.
Okay. Okay, PowerPoint is what I was looking at, and that's what I was presenting to you and why I have this mix-up, because it was approved in PowerPoint and denied in the recommendation. So I'm mixed up, but we'll go with whatever you recommend.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on item number nine? With there being none, I'm going to close the public comment hearing and look for a recommendation.
I make a motion that we recommend denial of the zoning change per staff's recommendation.
A second.
Before we vote, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Just a follow-up question because I was looking at the... I mean, it's up to you, Dan.
Yeah, no, please.
Go ahead.
I was looking at the original PowerPoint that was posted, quite a few different conditions. It's been developed in the guidelines of 14825 for native master design plan and parking, two parking units for dwelling. I'll relook at those recommendations and decide that those needs to be denied.
Correct. After discussion, we did end up agreeing on a denial recommendation.
So this isn't an actual misprint? This was...
Many times, we'll have a preliminary, a working staff recommendation whenever we receive an application, and it goes through discussion, beginning with the person actually developing the report, and it works its way up the chain of command through Development Services, all the way to the director's desk. And at each one of those phases, additional discussion occurs, meaning we sit around a table and it's, have you thought of this scenario? And what about this one issue? Or could you foresee a plating issue coming up? Or can the infrastructure handle it? We have those internal discussions to vet each zoning case, and I can only think that it might have been an initial draft that was inadvertently posted before the final draft was then uploaded to overwrite that original draft.
That the actual claim on the constructability with regards to impervious coverage on the scheme of acts, is that still based on applicant's representative, kind of like, I mean, his opinion that it is due?
And after continued discussion within the department, ultimately, we settled on a recommendation of denial. Essentially, it is too much density on too small of a lot, but what my dad used to say on the ranch, seven pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag. It's just you're putting too much onto one lot that it makes it almost improbable that you'll be able to meet every other checkbox of building code, fire code, and the UDC itself without inherently jeopardizing the very site plan you're basing the entire zoning case on. So the very question you asked about Commissioner about landscaping, that even if you're able to fit all the landscaping, you may lose a few parking spaces and now be under. So that is still very much a real scenario. And our job is not to set anyone up for failure. We don't want to say yes, kick them down the road, they go through council, and they get hit at permit, and we didn't catch it. So we would rather bring that to the attention now. If adjustments need to be made by the client and he wishes to take another to shot at, he has every right to do so before getting to council, or if he wants to continue down this path, he has every right to do so. But it would be in our best interest in protecting the future tenants of this area to recommend denial.
For what it's worth, my reason for making this motion has really very little or nothing even to do with the site plan or whether or not it can be done. It's more because of the fact that this is not the way a PUD is meant to be used. It's supposed to be used as a tool to create unique, you know, something new that doesn't quite fit what's in the development code. And I understand we've used it for, you know, a little bit different, but that's when our UDC just is terribly written, like with the townhome ordinance. And so it's usually when it's done, it's still done in a way at least, or in a sense, to bring a unique character. In this case, it's really just being used as a tool for a variance. And so I don't feel like that's the appropriate way to do it. Whether or not they can build it, you know, to be seen, I guess, but that's not why I'm making this motion, just to clarify.
Andrew, a quick question. If this zoning case is denied, what is the, what's the impact to the applicant? Is there a year time limit before they can come back in and recommend another zoning case? Or, you know, could they come back in, say 30 days later with a revised plan?
Great question. So first step is if Planning Commission recommends denial, the applicant still has every right to continue on the path to city council for a final decision. If city council were to deny, there is a two-step, you know, what we call a timeout, a one-year timeout because of a denial, that you cannot come back for the exact same request unless you have new information or somehow your application has changed. If a new design were to come about, we would more than likely bring a presentation to this board to say, would you be willing to waive the one-year requirement because a new design has been submitted? We staff may agree with that future design. But nevertheless, we do have the ability to come back before this body and say, something has changed that's new. We would like to consider waiving that one-year timeout period.
And then in the situation where staff feels like it's not going to work, the applicant says, no, we've got enough impervious or, you know...
Yes, sir.
landscaping area. And let's just say that this PUD gets approved against staff recommendation. When it comes time to permitting or do the design, what happens at that time if it's determined it doesn't work, you know? And what's the implication there?
At that point, I hope and pray it falls under what we call the 10% rule. So within the UDC, when it comes to PUDs, there's what I call my shoehorn policy, meaning I have a little bit of a 10% room to say if you have to move a staircase a little bit to the left, if you have maybe a decimal of a percentage above impervious surface, I have a very small amount of authority. The reason that 10% is so small is obviously we don't want to bring a PUD back to, all the way to city council because of, you know, one parking space, which is obvious that we administratively can adjust. But at the same time, if it goes above 10%, we're undermining the faith that council has entrusted that their approval of that PUD will ring true, and we're not deviating it too far out on a limb. So it's a fine line we dance. That's why we keep it at 10% and not 20% or 30%. It's kept at a very small margin for a reason.
I mean, based on your calculation, how far off are you? I mean, do you think this potentially could fit in that 10% range? Or are we, do we have a chasm of difference between what the applicant thinks and what staff feels? Or, and maybe you haven't run those calculations, but just...
Something you won't hear in government too much is the use of common sense. And so when I say that is, yes, the design may be able to squeeze to a point to meet the letter of the code, but to accomplish things like fitting 10 trash cans, to be able to have a person turn with their CDO or jet ski because they do have boat slips in the back, how are you able to move that without a boat ramp? Or how are you going to be able to negotiate some of those turns on such a tight driveway? So while, and this is a discussion I have with every single plan that I have to review on a daily basis, while things may meet code, I always say the best and worst thing you'll ever hear about a building is it meets code. It's that it may function on paper, but it may not function necessarily in reality. So that is above all, one of the things that we take into consideration, is the site even functional, aside from it's really using a PUD that shouldn't be used as this tool or it cannot meet minimum landscaping standards. At the end of the day, if it creates a dangerous situation, we still have to call that out.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, I think we have a motion from Commissioner York. Do we have a, did we get a second on that?
Yes, a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Do we have a director's report?
There's no report this evening.
Okay. Does anybody want to add future agenda items to the next Planning Commission meeting? With there being none, I guess we will adjourn. Thank you.